One, we'll open up our regular session, November eighteenth, twenty twenty. Please silence or shut off your cell phones, join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yep.
Um, we have a good-sized repayment agreement and possible action of the solar advisory committee applications.
Okay. You have anything?
I have no amendments.
Okay, so our first order of business is the general public comment, we'll get that later, but on our regular session, but we have one o'clock road vacation hearing. Before I open that up, we have Darwin on the call. Darwin, are you there? No? Legal counsel?
He's on here.
Yeah, well, there you are. All right. Just getting ready to open up the hearing, Commissioner Albertson.
I apologize, I was on the conference call.
Yeah, I received the text after we were looking for you. So, um, is Darwin calling in or zooming in, do you know? Does anybody know? I just on the phone with him a little bit earlier.
He was going to zoom in. But I haven't talked to him since then.
Um, just kidding, I'll call him. Hi.
I gave him a call and he didn't reach me.
Okay. If he's saying he was going to. Sorry for the little bit slow getting the hearing process together. Here, we'll get it started with the Zoom and the call-in, things are a little bit slower than usual. Ken, you guys on the, on Zoom, can you hear us okay? Can you guys hear us?
Yeah, we're on the video.
But we can't hear them.
Oh, there, there.
There we go.
There we go.
Perfect. Are you guys available on the field?
Um, can they see us?
What did he say?
He asked if we were available on.
There we go. There we go. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, so we're a little bit slow here. I will go ahead and open up the hearing at five minutes after one. We have a road vacation hearing scheduled for one o'clock today. Before we take testimony, we're going to make sure everybody's on the line. We do have, I believe, we have received an email. I believe that was intended for the record also. I want to make sure that that was intended for the record during the hearing process.
Yes.
So, that is intended, I'm sorry, trying to passively look through who I'm speaking to. You're representing, this is David? Are you David?
Can you give me a last second? I lost, I lost everything for you. I'm trying to find, I can hear you, but I can't. I lost your screen.
Oh, you still have those voice?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and your name is David?
So my name is David Blay.
Okay, and David, did you intend on the email to be part of the record today?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to take that into the record, with each and every one of us individually. So, that's part of the record. Do we have Kevin Hawke or Darwin online? Darwin Johnson just joined us.
Road Department's on the line.
All right.
Thank you.
We got everybody on the line, so, as I said earlier, this is a road vacation hearing. This was brought before the board. We had done a resolution to get to the process today. So today, we are going to accept testimony towards this potential road vacation. They've taken into record the email from David Blay, who I believe, representing Florence Parker, correct?
Yes, and with me is my wife, Chris Blay, and Chris is the trustee for her mom for the estate.
All right, well, welcome, and so we'll go ahead and get into this process. I guess, a little bit of overview, this was brought to the board. We, this is a road that has not been noticeable as far as county operations for quite some years. Commissioners many, many, many years ago, through a process through the state highway, abandoned a part of that state highway out there that comes down to the county. The county took ownership of that at that time with not being able to find records. Pro or con whether the county vacated that road at the time or not. It does not fit our system, and it has not been maintained and taken care of from our system. And it has had the appearance over the years that it's been gated and closed to the public. So that's where we're at today. They came to us because of, it does not fit the system. So, if I miss something, Mr. Bailey, Kevin Hawke, or the board, or anybody else, please bring him forward now, and then we'll take testimony.
First of all, since I still don't have the video, can I ask who is speaking?
Who's speaking? Oh, I'm Commissioner Brad Winters, Chair of the Board of Commissioners right now.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned just a minute ago that it appeared to, the easement appeared to be closed off to the public. Where, in fact, if you, in the email, near the bottom of the first portion of the email, we're always under the impression that the easement was a stock easement, for cattle to be driven, as it was, I guess, a long, long, long time ago. And we have even seen it used as such in the past. So, although the gate may have been locked on numerous occasions, and recently because of security purposes for the property, the easement has been used by the public. So it has not, I guess, has not deterred those who know it's there from using it.
I appreciate that, and so, at this point, we're going to take testimony on support or non-support of the vacation of this county road. So, Mr. Blay, is there more you have to bring forward? Or are you going to bring forward as representing the landowner?
Um, yes, and most of this is on the email that was sent to all of you and made a matter of record. Previously, a couple of years ago, we started this process by trying to find out who the owner of the easement was, because Chris and I, in taking care of Florence, it's a state, we were looking to sell the property. And we looked at the maps, we saw something that looked awkward, and so we brought it up. We were told by the county, Lake County, that the state owned it. Then we were told by the state that the county owned it. We had to hire an attorney who looked at the deeds, enlisted the help of a merit title, and between the two of them, we sent emails to the county stating that indeed it was the county who owned it. And that was verified. Then we started to perceive, to look into what we needed to do to have the bridge fixed. At that time, we didn't even think about a vacation of the easement and bridge. We didn't even know if that was even possible. So we were looking at getting the bridge fixed, since it's in a serious state of disrepair. And I think some of the pictures that were in the email would be stating that as well. So, we initially were dealing in our email with Dave Knowles and Christie Horn. And then it was this year, about August, where we, the emails going back a little more, we realized that we were the ones who were needing to do an inspection of the bridge. We were given permission by Dave Knowles, the Assessor's Office, and Christie Horn of the Road Department to go ahead and inspect the bridge, even though we do not own it. We had Anderson Engineering do that for us, since they were so busy. It took them about a month to get around to actually get us a contract. And it took them about another month to get them to actually inspect the bridge. And timing wise, that wasn't too bad, so two months overall. But just prior to that, we received the email of the vacation of the bridge, which was rather a surprise to us, since in our mind, we were still in negotiations with the county, trying to figure out what to do with the bridge, excuse me, with the repair of the bridge. So to find out that suddenly the county was going to vacate the property, obviously that's not a bad thing in one sense, getting the property for Florence, but on the other hand, the bridge, not mentioned in the vacation, is in horrible shape. After having Anderson Engineering inspect the bridge, and you can see the pictures there, they told us nobody should be driving over it. Some of the timbers are rotted through. The concrete abutment on the flow side or the north side of the bridge, a portion of it has actually collapsed into the creek. And I think that during any kind of serious floodwater, who knows? The bridge could be undermined by that abutment with the water as well. So there is a serious concern about the bridge, its condition, and what could happen if the bridge collapsed into the creek. The creek floods frequently, could back up to Highway one forty. So we have concerns, first of all, that, one, that the county is passing the maintenance of this bridge to Florence Parker, who at this point, being ninety-three years old, had her second stroke, is disabled, wheelchair-bound, and is living in the care facility in Lakeview. Putting that burden, which is estimated at somewhere thirty thousand dollars, putting a burden on to her, when obviously she has other things more serious to consider, being her poor health. Then, if the bridge collapses, and who knows? Like I said, the concrete abutment has already collapsed. Some of the beams are only being held up by the spikes going through it from the decking. It's so poor. That could cause problems on Highway one forty. And with Florence Parker being held liable for them. So there is some serious concern about the vacation of this bridge and that being put on to Florence. We were making every effort prior to this to deal with the county. Initially, it was Dave Knowles and Christie Horn. I spoke to, for the first time, I spoke to Kevin Hawke. Last week, we had a discussion about the bridge and what our suggestion might be. There's obviously a lot of discussion that could take place here, that could take hours. But just to cut to the chase, we thought that we, well, first of all, that the county can't pass the bridge in this condition to a homeowner like that. We think that's unfair. Kevin had mentioned the possibility of demolishing the bridge, which obviously was on our mind as well. And so our thought was that if, and again, this is mentioned, all of this is mentioned in the email, that if the bridge were to, excuse me, if the county were to demolish the bridge, that perhaps we could take those costs as the county's portion of repairing the bridge. We would take in a portion as well, so that the bridge could be repaired, perhaps not in the state as it is now, twenty-four foot wide, not rebuilt for highway traffic as it was originally, but rebuilt as agriculture use, not as why, so that we could keep the costs down and have a more equitable transfer of ownership of the bridge between the county and Florence.
So, I try not to ask too many questions during the testimony, but it sounds like, other than the bridge, resolving that issue, you're not opposed to the vacation of the road because of that property reverts to the adjoining landowners, which primarily, most of it goes to the Parker, the state or Parker's property. But you do have some struggles with the bridge condition. Is that fair enough?
Of course. We're not adverse to the vacation of the easement. We know we'll have to pay more taxes on the property, but that's obviously fine. We have the value of the bridge, if it's in a working condition, they'll raise the taxes, and we're okay with that too. But the fact that the bridge right now is dangerous, the bridge, that's where we take some concern. And we think we're speaking not just liability on our part, but liability on the county's part.
Okay. Other testimony on favor or opposed to vacation of this property, this road? So, there being done, I'm going to close the hearing part of this. And the way it works on the hearing part is, now the Board of Commissioners take into consideration the testimony that's brought forward, either continue the hearing or make a decision from here. So, during that portion of this hearing, we only allow, when we ask questions, out to the audience and everything. So at one eighteen, we're going to close that portion of the hearing for further discussion. So I'll start that discussion. It sounds like that during the hearing side of it, the main concern is the bridge. We got to talk apples and oranges here, to bring a bridge to a standard. The county has bridges that are for public use compared to the bridges of private, it's two different things. So we got to make sure that we note in our discussion here that to bring it up to whatever the engineered design may not be the same.
We're getting some feedback.
We're getting some real interesting feedback. Okay, so, this is to start the discussion between the Board, our legal counsel, our finding director, and our road official. It sounds like that the Parker's representation is willing to work on resolving the bridge issue, and what does that mean for us? And where we limit our liability, our risk, or whatever. Right now, today, by the title search and everything, that is our road. If we want to go in there today, and basically shut that road down and tear that bridge out, we can probably do that, I would refer to legal counsel or whatever, and limit the access. I don't want our parameters on the RS, that's not our intent. Our intent is to get this property to the adjoining landowners in a fair enough condition that they're able to use it. And at the same time, we have to consider that this is at the public's best interest. And so, for me, public's best interest, this does not fit any road system that our road department uses or that we maintain. And so then we jump down to where it is, county road. It pretty much has to meet that criteria for me, for county road use. Not easement use, not nothing like that, but for county road use. And that means driving every type of vehicle that's allowing county roads across it. And it just doesn't fit our system. And that's where I'm at. So the bridge is the unique part of this. Just to foster discussion. Kevin, did you want to say a little bit as far as the road official and the road system? I think I spoke pretty close to that it doesn't fit our road system at all.
It does, can you hear me?
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't fit into our road system, and, I mean, not, not even knowing that it was part of until here recently. Thus, no work being done on the bridge. So it should be in favor to vacate it, because we have no use of, the road department has no use of that. So.
So, I'm in agreement with our real superintendent, and you yourself, Commissioner, that this, the road doesn't fit county use and service to the public. It should have been vacated many, many years ago. I think it was one of those things that just kind of slipped through the cracks. We weren't aware of, that it was even in our possession, obviously, based on the testimony. There was some confusion whether or not it even was county, or whether it was still owned by the state. That on our part, you know, we just didn't know we still had this. If we went back and looked, maybe we'd be able to find some of that in the records in minutes, and how this came about. But ultimately, at the end of the day, this is still our responsibility to decide what we intend to do with it. I think that we need to vacate it one way or the other. I'm not sure, and this is where I would put the question to the board, on what to do with the bridge itself. If we spend any dollars or any money of the taxpayers on this bridge, I think it should be just to take the bridge out entirely. I don't think that it prudent of us to restore or fix up a bridge with county tax dollars, that when it's not servicing the public in any way. And I want, even if it was just a portion of the bridge, if we wanted to take some of it out, and if they wanted to leave some of the infrastructure still there, that's, that'd be fine with me. I would want something in writing, I think, from the landowners, saying, hey, this is, you know, we want that infrastructure in place, but take this out, whatever else, and then we just take the beams and everything else and leave some of the infrastructure still in place. But I don't want any more liability on the county as far as this bridge is concerned. That's just kind of where I'm at. Personally, I, and the whole thing, I think, is well within our rights. And Mr. Bailey, I actually might ask you this question. Are we within the bounds to simply vacate it then entirely? Even given the dilapidated state of the bridge itself?
Yes, you actually, at the risk of, at the risk of stating, it'd be obvious. If you vacate the road, then I think you probably have to address whether or not the bridge is falling down or in poor condition, needs to be removed just to prevent flooding problems running toward the highway. Or the possibility that someone thinks there's a bridge there when there's really not. So if you vacate, that's what you'd have to face. That's separate from the vacation process, though. If you don't vacate, then you're going to have to rehabilitate the bridge to county standards, and it sounds like you'd be doing that for the benefit of just one individual or one family, which would be problematic.
Thank you. Thank you. Christopher Williams, I agree with you. I agree with you, I think you articulated that quite well. And Mr. Blay, we'll get to you in a minute, but we're talking amongst each other right now. If, if the landowner was acceptable to us going in there, taking the deck off of it, basically, with more layman terms, hauling that off, and then they have lots left to build, whatever they would like to put across there as the owner of that property, that is something that I think is very doable within the county's abilities and skills. You could haul that stuff off, so that's an option, that sort of, I was thinking the same way. Is that the direction you're thinking?
Yeah, that'd be fine, I think, and I assume everyone would agree with me. I would want something in writing from the landlord, stating.
They accept it.
They accept it in that condition.
Do you have anything, Commissioner Albertson?
Yeah, I do. I'm kind of looking at it the same way as you two guys, but we might, oh, we might, a little more boldly. We absolutely cannot put any money into a bridge and then vacate it to a single landowner. Otherwise, we're going to have to put county money into every easement into, in the county, and which we have refused to do. There's hundreds of miles of roads in Christmas Valley that are a public easement, and the county will not put any money into those. And if we sidestep and do this one, it's going to open up a cannon worm. And so, my feeling, and I don't mean to sound harsh, is either you take the property as is, or you don't. And we either pull the bridge completely out, or we leave it for you guys to do what you want to do with it, without any liability, and that's my thought.
So, pretty similar, maybe a little bit less work done by the county of what yours are just in?
We either take it out or we don't.
Okay.
But if we don't take it out, I would definitely want to be not held liable for doing so, so.
So, I'm going to just go ahead and reach out to you, Mr. Blay. If we were to make a decision here shortly to vacate the road and take the bridge out, the deck off of it, haul it off, leave it in the condition that would leave it in, would you accept that condition of that bridge? And would you consider that at all? Oh, you're muted, sir.
You're muted, we can't hear you, sorry. Thank you.
There we go.
Yep.
My apologies.
No worries.
There would be a couple of clarifications that I would need. First of all, like you mentioned in the email, we're not sure if that stock drive paddle easement is still a valid easement, and if that easement has rights to that bridge. Like I said, we've seen it used in the past as a paddle easement, and so, we know the public, to what degree, I don't know, but the public has used that easement and that bridge for that purpose. I don't know if there's any utility easements on that easement as well. I have no idea whatsoever.
So I'm going to interrupt right there. We're talking a county road, you're talking an easement. And we're talking about, we're talking about vacating the county road. If there's an easement, that's an agreement on the deed with the landowners. And the title search doesn't show an easement that shows that it is a county. And the title search doesn't show an easement that shows that it is a county road. So I want to make sure we're talking apples to apples. So if we were to vacate the county road, it goes away, the ownership becomes yours, unless there's an attachment on to your deed that there's an easement for specific landowners or others to cross that.
Let me ask this question, is, is Dave Knowles part of this meeting today?
I don't believe so. Dave Knowles, I don't believe.
No, Dave, Dave is not part of the meeting today.
Um, and, and the reason why I asked was because he was the one who pushed this entire vacation. He was obviously the one I was negotiating with, I thought. Um, he was the one who spoke to me about the stock drive easement being in conjunction with the road. And so now not seeing him here today is a little disturbing because some of that information came directly from him. So, and, and I understand too that if, if the easement is not a part of the county's jurisdiction, I guess, for lack of a better word, then, then I understand that as well. So, but, but that easement was one of my concerns. And how that easement, stock drive easement worked into this county road and bridge. Because if, if you look on the parcel map, it looks like the cattle drive easement goes right across this, the county road and the bridge. Um, if the easement is no longer there, that's fine. I just wanted it to be brought up and addressed because there had been some, some contention with adjacent property owners over that stock drive easement and his access to this public way that the county owns.
I, I, I appreciate you bringing that forward because of, my mind wasn't talking easement at all. But if you've been, uh, told that there's an easement there, we definitely need to research that also. I believe.
Well, and like I said, that came from Dave Knowles. And I know that adjacent property owners have had serious, um, arguments over it, hiring attorneys. And it all related to not just the easement, but the easement's access to this right-of-way and bridge. Uh, this, it's been, and Dave said it was called stock drive easement, the cattle drive easement, military road easement, and under several different names. But if you, if you look on the parcel map, it does show it on the parcel map. So that's my first, my first clarification question. My second one is as to the county taking up the, the decking, things like that. Um, I would have to defer to Anderson Engineering. I do have their report, and I, I wasn't sure whether that was something if I sent it to you, whether I, uh, that, that was something he didn't want to at this time. But the report is very clear about the condition of the bridge and the beams. Um, I'm not sure of taking the decking off. I'm not sure if that's a safe thing to do, uh, or how they would go about it. So that would have to defer to, to Anderson. Since the beams, the beams below are rotted.
Okay.
I have not had an opportunity to talk to Daryl Anderson, um, since he's been so busy. But just by looking at the pictures, it literally looks like the board, like the, the decking, the four-by-two decking is almost supporting the structure of beams below. The beams below being so rotted, and there's so many of them. So that would have to be something that I think we'd have to deal with Daryl Anderson to see what he would propose would be the best way to do that. But some form of that, some form of that would probably be acceptable to us.
Okay, so, um, we're not denying that the bridge is in disrepair. We're not taking on and going to bring it up to county standards.
Correct.
So my question is relatively simple. If you would take it, if we remove the deck off the top, not talking to argument of the cost or anything, would you accept it if the deck was gone?
Um, we would have to think about that because at, at this point, the, the deck is the simplest part of this process. The, the concrete abutments, um, a, a portion of the west side of concrete abutment supporting the bridge has already collapsed into the creek. And you, you can see that in the pictures that I sent. The apron going on to the bridge is failing as a result of that concrete abutment crashing. So I'm not sure if, if just taking the decking off is something we would be receptive to. We'd have to, we'd have to think about it, um, and talk to Florence as well. This is Parker.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't, I don't, frankly, right off the cuff right now, I don't think that's enough.
Okay, thank you for that. So back to the board discussion, but I'm gonna throw this out there. What I see is we immediately go close that road for safety reasons. Give our road master direction. We have testimony today how unsafe it is. We put a road close sign on it. We continue this hearing to investigate what we can or can't do with this. But effective immediately, that road is not safe to drive and it is closed to the public. Can we do that, Mr. Bailey and our road official?
Yes, you can do that.
So that's my suggestion is to continue the hearing and immediately close the road to the information that came to us on the safety issue.
We can do that. Uh, I do want to also point out, um, the only thing that's come before us is the vacation of county road. The other easements are that, uh, are, that goes with the property owner.
I, that, we have to, without Mr. Knowles here, we don't know what he researched or found. But I, I agree with you a hundred percent that we, we have to, we have to check into that, I guess. I, I follow you. You're, I'm on the page, okay. All right.
So, Mr. Hawk, what would be the best step as far as closing the road?
Can you, can you try that one more time?
Uh, what would be the first, what would be the best step to close the road immediately? What do you need to do?
I have, I have, uh, pulled up signs that I can go install on both sides of the bridge. Um, as far as where the end of the actual road is, um, I think that one of those houses there or boat houses use, um, the county right-of-way to get for access back into where the buildings are. So I think what we're talking about is, excuse me, for safety precautions of the actual structure itself not allowing anyone to be on it. So I can.
So could you put a couple barricades across in front of the, the colon?
On both, on both sides of the structure, yeah. We can, we can do that. I'm, I'm not at that site, um, and I haven't specifically visited that site. I'm assuming I'm gonna have to go through a locked access to get to this to even proceed. But, um, if that's the case, then that's what we'll do.
So I, hopefully, we can get that unlocked. Technically, it's a county road, it can't be gated and locked. So if you have, you can bolt cutters and cut it, go in there and do it.
Yeah, we will, we will, uh, we will have them installed.
The utility company has the keys to the gate, and we also have keys to the gate available in town so we can have that gate open. Our, our concern to closing the gate was that there's, there's no one on the property and there's also, uh, horses and cattle out there. And they would have access to that front gate and would get out on the highway. So we can get a key to you. You, obviously, you can get onto the property, but we would ask that the gate be closed. Otherwise, it could be, uh, a hazard on the highway from, uh, the livestock on the property.
So you're saying that the, that the bridge and access to that bridge is closed off to the public currently?
Currently, uh, since there's nobody on the property and the, the house is easily accessible to the highway, there's been a lot of trespassers on the property. Uh, we don't live in Lakeview, um, in conjunction with the Highway Patrol, um, in telling us that there's been a, a rash of robberies on vacant properties, um, along Highway 140. So we decided to, to lock the gate. But Surprise Valley Electric Company has their lock on the gate as well. And we've been dealing with Surprise Valley with that. Uh, we have a Realtor that has keys. Um, obviously, we want the bridge issue to be resolved, or they put the property back up for sale. But we can easily get, uh, the gate opened for you. Um, but we're asking that the gate be closed, otherwise the livestock get, uh, on the highway.
So I want, I, I want to note for the record that, that this county road for years has not been used as a public way as has been presented to us. And has been used for personal use as it is right now. And that, that it is not our responsibility on a county road to gate it and lock it. Our responsibility is to give public access. Correct. I, I, I appreciate very much what you have to say, um, representing the Parkers. But you, you can't have both sides fully use the land for your personal use and then tell us we have an obligation to take care of it. Whenever we didn't even know it was in our system, error on our part, I believe. But, um, I believe there's some burden upon the landowner to, uh, acknowledge that they have not used this the same way as any other county road in the past. So anyways.
Well, my, 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 the, the situation that I'm bringing up is that since the property has been vacated and we're not living there, we, and due to the Highway Patrol telling us about the robberies, a rash of robberies of ranches along Highway 140, we decided to shut the gate, lock the gate because we're not there. The sheriffs have chased trespassers away on a couple occasions, even once when we were visiting. There were people on the property stealing from one of the barns, and the Highway Patrol came along. So they suggested to us that we lock the gate. So the, the gate being locked has only been a very recent situation.
Yeah, I, I appreciate those thoughts very much. If it is county road, which it is, they are not trespassing on the county road. So your gate and locking should be at your property line, uh, the county property line. It's that simple for me. So anyways, uh, back to, I would like to, if the board is willing, continue the hearing. We've got a lot of new information, even information, we're just talking about a gate being locked across county road. So forth, so on. Uh, we did, Mr. Knowles is actually not on site right now, I don't believe, so we're not able to talk with him.
Yep.
And I still support a hundred percent putting signs up, but closing the area for the bridge. I do not want to limit access to the property owner, to their property. Uh, I, I understand that very much, but the bridge has come to a public meeting as a safety issue. So we need to address that. That's perfectly right. Closure on that.
Um, the other thing is I just want to make sure that, uh, well, I, I'm, I'm fine with moving this forward uh, to, uh, for, for a later date, for an actual final decision on the actual vacation. We also need to make sure that there's an order of vacation draft. So that it can expressly outline exactly what we're intending to do. Uh, because that hasn't been done, uh, yet. We don't have an order of vacations in front of us for us to, to go.
Go back to the order?
Yeah.
The actual vacation.
Yeah, vacation order. So that, and that's the only thing that I, I could see that we, we haven't been able to do yet, uh, for ORS. So, um, but we'll, we can put that together and have that for the later meeting. Because I still feel that is the direction that we are going to need to go. It's not servicing the public. Either way, isn't servicing the public, uh, it's, it's still, it really needs to go back to the property owner entirely. Uh, we can research and continue to look into some of these other questions on easements.
I just want to elaborate on one comment there. You made just a little bit and not to, to get back into, uh, not a question other than to, or a comment towards, it's just for the board, is during testimony, we heard that they, the property owners have to pay more tax. They're gaining property at zero cost. The joining property owners are gaining that at zero cost. A concern to pay property tax on free property? Surprisingly. Just to comment.
My only comment with that was that Dave Knowles had brought that up. And I told him that obviously he knew he has to pay more taxes on property.
So, Mr. Bailey, on the.
Yeah.
Hearing process, um, to continue this, is there timeframes we have to come to? We can continue it for at least one more hearing or more if needed? Is there any timeframes we have to, uh, get through this?
No.
Okay.
So I guess, um, Mr. Hawk needs to get the key.
Yes.
Can you guys open that today? Have that open today so Mr. Hawk can take care of business?
Um, I have to make the phone call, but, um, it could be today, probably not worse than tomorrow.
Well, um, not, not to be real blunt about it, but if, if we're talking about this being an active county right-of-way right now, then, and I'm going to close the structure, then it will be open today because county access can't be locked off by the public.
Agree with you.
Agree.
And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna go out there right now as soon as I hang up the phone and I'm gonna install road close signs on both sides of the structure. The public will have access to both sides of that structure if they see fit, if they choose. The liability of someone getting on the bridge, I'm gonna handle by closing the structure. Correct me if I'm wrong, somebody.
Nope, uh, that, that's part of being the road official's duties, and I appreciate that you understand those, and the, so the board understands those.
Two weeks ago, it was, it. Two weeks ago, um, when this came out, uh, we were told by Dave Knowles that was our responsibility to put signs on the bridge, and that's why I wish he was here. Um, and so we already called a contractor to try, um, to get into his schedule so they need to put signs on each side of the bridge to prevent anyone from going on the bridge. Because obviously, we didn't want anything to happen with anyone crossing that bridge. Um, so I will call that contractor and tell him, um, to forget about doing that. And I can call the Realtor right now and just go over, uh, open, open the gates so that way we don't have a, an expensive lock, uh, taken out. She probably could be there within the hour. And then you can have free access and we will not close the gate. The gate will just remain open. And we, we want to work with the county from the very beginning. That's been our desire. That's why we started this conversation two years ago. And unfortunately, in August, after giving direction to have the bridge inspection, bridge inspected, the county went in a different direction without even telling us, which we are, uh, still to this day a little concerned over. We want to work with the county to resolve this. That's been our resolve from the beginning. So we will take care of whatever we need to do to work with you.
Okay, so thank you for that. Mr. Hawk, uh, do you have the contact for, uh, Mr. Blake? And if not, we will get that to you. I think you got the email also, so.
That is.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk, we appreciate that, Mr. Blake. We want a good resolution to this. But the things that came forward in the public hearing meeting and everything, uh, has, we, we need to do things. So, it'll be addressed. So we will continue this hearing to our next regular session.
The second of December.
Second of December. It will be, the time will be noticed at that. I don't know, our, start at ten, what time it will be.
We can, we can do it for the same time, one o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay, so, yes, Melon.
We already have a hearing at one o'clock?
Oh, we do? Oh, you're correct, absolutely, thank you. We'll leave it to time to future. Yeah.
Um, this, Mr. Bailey, do we have, by consensus of the board to continue this hearing, or does that need to be a motion and a second?
Actually.
No, no, consensus is fine.
But Mr. Bailey, either we vacate the road or we don't, correct? The easement has nothing to do with our part.
But that's exactly right. Um, whether there's any other easement involved, um, isn't really relevant to the question of vacating the road.
And so my thought is, we, instead of continuing this, we either close the road or we don't, correct?
Did you, we are?
That that sounds like your position, yes.
But what I'm saying is
You mean vacate?
Vacate the road.
Okay, you said close.
Yeah, pardon me.
Sorry.
We either vacate the road or we don't vacate it. We either give them the uh the land as is with no liability, or we pull the bridge completely out. Wouldn't you think that would be legally the correct thing to do? Well, Mr. Bailey?
Well, um, uh, let me uh let me sort of step a little bit away of being from being just purely legal counsel. Um, you can do either what you want legally speaking, but I think the wisest thing to do would be to vacate the road. Um, make sure that uh no one can get hurt by not knowing that the uh the collapsed bridge or unsafe bridge is there, um, and then move on. Um, it really doesn't matter if there are other easements for cattle or anything else. Those are irrelevant to the the public road. Um, so I I don't know that what you're, I don't know that you're gaining anything by waiting. I understand the concern, you want to make sure you have, you're making a uh decision based on all the information. But um, I don't know that you're gonna gain any information that makes any difference.
So I believe myself that there's been information come forward today. I believe that Mr. Knowles isn't here, and a party associated with this has been told certain things that we have to evaluate and look at, because that party was representing the county. That party being Dave Knowles. And that has been brought to our attention, so that's definitely one reason. Uh, the other thing is, is um vacating the road and trying to work with the landowner and the the bridge disrepair. We considered through the discussion to at least take the top off of it. So I I'd like to continue it, but I, if you want to make a motion, you're more than welcome to. I mean, I'm just telling you where where I'm at.
I I make a motion that we vacate the road and then have our road superintendent walk the bridge off and put a closed sign.
Until what's, sorry, motion on the table? Um, is that the motion?
Yes.
I will second the motion for discussion.
Motion's been made and seconded to vacate the road. The second part of your motion was to to put a block or a sign in front of the the bridge, so nobody can cross it. And, okay, so the motion's been made and seconded in discussion. For me, if we vacate the road, we no longer, if we put signs upon it, then we've taken some responsibility on something we no longer
Right, right, and that was, that was my my question, as far as putting the signs.
I'm just trying to protect the county from being illegal. And and vacating the road, it's not ours anymore, is enough legally, I'm fine with that. And I guess that's a question with Mr. Bailey. So Mr. Bailey, what I'm asking is, if we vacate the road as is, are we still liable for that bridge, and who crosses it?
Yes, either way, you're gonna be liable, so you've got to put up some barriers to notify people of the condition of the bridge.
Reason I thought for better. Okay, so my secondary question on that is, or or discussion is, um, until which time will the signs be up? I mean, we put the signs up, until which time do we take them down? Do we take them down once we remove the bridge in its entirety? Or do we put, uh, or do we leave them there until there's an agreement made with the landlord that they're willing to take on a portion or all of, all the the bridge in ti- in its entirety? And we can vacate it, the question is on this bridge, it's right in the middle of the whole thing, that so.
That's apparently the only problem, there are a couple of things, the bridge and the condition of it. And whether the landowner would accept it with the condition.
I'm I'm personally, I'm willing to just remove the bridge in its entirety and have, and and Kevin can take it out. And we leave the signs up until which time Kevin takes the entire bridge out. Um, my suggestion in terms of allowing a portion of the bridge structure to stay would be to facilitate the landlord and allowing some structure to remain so that they can they can keep a bridge on their own private property to go off uh over that that waterway. Um, that was
So the problem with that is, is that we leave any part of that structure, even out of the kindness of our heart. And that part of that structure fails, the county would be liable.
Unless there's a written agreement from the property owner states they
That's why I'd like If they don't want us to tear the bridge out, tell us we're free of liability, we leave it. Or we're gonna tear it out, that's what I said the very first time, and so.
Further discussion?
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Um, I'm having a little difficulty hearing, but uh, is is that, uh, Mr. Albertson speaking on my left?
Yes, Commissioner Albertson.
Did I, you were mentioning, um, uh, well, maybe you can just repeat that last part, because I was having a little trouble hearing you. About what the county would do with the bridge in conjunction with with the owner?
So my thought is, either you take the bridge as is without any liability for the county, or we tear it out, it's up to you. And so we're not gonna leave part of the bridge, because if we leave part, we're still liable. We either take it out, or you give us a letter saying that we're not liable for that bridge. And then you do what you want with it.
One of the, uh, and it's it's in the email that's been recorded for this meeting, and my conversation with Kevin Hawke was the possibility of taking the funds that the county might use to demolish the bridge and using it as as sort of the county's portion. And then we would take over doing what we need to do with the bridge. Um, and then in a sense, we're both contributing, but we still get some sort of of bridge. Obviously, we cannot rebuild that bridge, that thing is just, it's huge, and it's quite a, quite a monster to rebuild. Um, but we're not adverse to put money into it, obviously, we're gonna benefit by it, we know that. But would would the county then put the demolition costs and instead demolishing it, put that towards rebuilding the bridge? And we would write a release of liability, and you'd be no longer involved in it, and we would have something to help us, to help Florence rebuild this bridge.
I'm not speaking for the whole board, but I would say no personally to that. Just because
Uh, Commissioner, maybe maybe I, can I cut through, maybe cut cut through some of this?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, right now, you have a public uh road that has been blocked off to the public, so there's no danger of somebody driving over the bridge. If you don't vacate, if you vacate the bridge, uh, the uh uh road today, then you don't have to do anything at all with the bridge in terms of the concern about somebody might drive over it, because nobody can get to it. The current landowner already knows it, but nobody's living there, so that's not a danger. So what I'm suggesting is if you vacate the the roadway today, then you don't have any worry about somebody accidentally driving and thinking the bridge exists there. Um, the only concern you have after that is could the the bridge, as it falls apart, create a problem for the flow of the stream uh or the creek? Um, that's a separate issue that you could work out with the landowner in terms of what the next step should be. Whether it's just sort of fixed up a little bit, and then the landowner creates their own little bridge over it, or you remove everything. But it, it wouldn't be a question of protecting the public from the uh dilapidated bridge.
So if we vacate the road, technically, we're not under any legal responsibility to remove the bridge right away. The bridge is on their property.
No.
Is that what you're saying?
No, you're you're responsible for the existence of the bridge there, but if nobody can get to the bridge, then you don't have any uh danger, and it sounds as though the access has been blocked off, so.
And the property owners are
I don't see any liability.
Got it.
Further discussion?
Well, we still have a motion on the date.
We do.
Further discussion? I think you could remove the motion.
I'd like to withdraw my second, and and then uh, and and it was his motion, so I'm only withdrawing my second, and I'd like to move this forward. To a later date.
So you make a motion?
Well, I have to withdraw my motion by second.
So so point of order that I need to be taught. Once a motion was made and seconded and we went to discussion, can the second be rescinded, Mr. Bailey?
Okay.
Well, you don't really have to rescind the uh the second. You could then move to a vote, which it sounds like it would, uh, the motion would not pass, because you don't have to vote uh similar to your second, so.
Okay, that's that's where my mind was, but I I apologize. No, it's fine, it's all part of the learning process. I I love learning something. So, um, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. We will continue the hearing for a further date to be able to review the information that has come forward. With that, we will ask Kevin Hawke to go out. And we will direct Kevin Hawke to go out and put road closed signs on both sides of the bridge for, because we got that information that it is unsafe at this time. Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody, for the participation. We will move on to our agenda. Thank you, guys, for being on Zoom, we appreciate it during these times. And we will definitely reach out to you for our next hearing, that will be on that first Wednesday of December.
We want to thank you very much for listening to our concerns, and we look forward to working with you to resolve the matter.
I I really think by our next hearing that if you and the road official were able to visit, uh, we might be able to find a resolution for this to move faster next time, I hope. Well, thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. All right, moving on to We put him through misery, they sent through the meeting. No, Kevin, we don't, you, you Kevin, you heard the direction and understand on the bridge, and you'll take care of that, sir.
Maybe everybody
Maybe, maybe.
I think he's on his way out.
He's on his way.
Okay. All right, Mr. Bailey, you're still on the line.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so moving on down our agenda, um, we have a two o'clock item we're late for. One thing that isn't listed here, but we always allow during um regular session, is public comment on anything other than what's on our agenda. Any public comment? Woo hoo, moving right along. All right, uh, two o'clock. We'll take a break before the two o'clock item. Mr. Jones, you're a you're a timed item, sir, come on up. We're just running just a bit late. Well, hopefully this won't take very long. Paisley EMS support request, we have information within the packet. I don't know that I have any additional information other than what's already in the packet um to to present to you. Um, I'm certain we'll answer any questions uh that you have. One of the points is, is that Paisley has not had any COVID cases uh within the community or within the EMS staff. And so your request today is coming before us. We have CARES dollars that came down to the county to pursue for COVID-related um needs within the county. We've leveraged quite a few of those. I don't know, Melanie, if you got a number today, I know I hopped to the treasure about uh projections and different things. I'm not sure we have any numbers, or fortunately, the dollars we have for sure. Um, when you came to talk to me individually, you were looking at a different thing of CARES dollars that special districts qualify for. You don't qualify
We don't qualify as a special district, because we're an independent agency. We we don't belong to anybody that got dollars. So, um, so are you saying that the city of Paisley, excuse me?
Go, go right there.
The city of Paisley cannot or will not hold you on this matter. The city of Paisley, the city council met yesterday. Uh, they were allocated twenty-five thousand dollars uh of CARES dollars. They had already looked at it and decided that there was nothing that they had there in Paisley that they uh qualified uh under all the rules of what you have to have. Um, and yesterday, they said, they agreed that we could go ahead, that they would take the information that I sent to them, it's basically the same information you have. And they would forward it to the state to see if it qualified and money would come down. Uh, so we don't have it, but at least
So there's possibility of decrease in your ask by twenty-five thousand?
Awesome. We wouldn't ask for the twenty-five thousand, we'd ask for the twenty-three thousand. The amount, what I want to do as a first priority is to bring our first out ambulance, the new ambulance, up to with a full power load system on it. It already has the power of gurney, which is part of the power load system. So it only would be about twenty-three thousand dollars to do what is needed to to bring it up to a full power load system.
So what you're asking from them is different from what you're asking from us?
I'm asking for the exact same thing. And I will tell you upfront, if we block the money through Paisley, and if you guys gave us the money, that's two thirds of it. We then would seriously consider putting the other thirty on ourselves. If we only get enough for the just one, twenty-three thousand, then we won't, we won't fund the forty some on additional that we would need.
Well, the odds are if it doesn't qualify to, to you, Paisley
Won't qualify for you.
I understand that. Just to let you know that, so it's not sort of either or.
I understand.
If we've made a decision.
If we don't get anything, we're exactly where we're at right now.
I just wasn't, it just was clicking in my head there when you said either or. Um, so where the struggle, and John, you know, this, the struggle is, is being as fair and equal to all volunteered across our our county. We've already went down that path on other requests so far. Um, we, we're sitting here today just to mention it is, is we, we're sitting here today just to mention it is, is we don't know what impacts of the last or the current amount of COVID that's hitting the county and our reimbursable costs or our costs that we can get back for county operations. So we, we do allow people to work remotely and everything if they've been in contact. Those are reimbursable amounts through the COVID dollars, through the CARES dollars. So we, we know we're going to have some more requests just for county operations before the end of the year. We don't, we can't predict what those are. Um, so Melanie, you didn't get any numbers for sure of what's been proposed, what's coming in? And what has actually been reimbursed at this time?
No, I think we are.
We may run down and ask again.
I think we're at 1:50, but I know some other departments have projects. And so, and I don't know what all the, everyone else is working on, so I hate to say we have all this money. I don't know how much sick time we'll have to reimburse for. Um, I hate to give you guys a firm number.
I don't think anybody can right now because I know the one proposed project, the Fairgrounds project could be a relatively high dollar project.
Yeah.
And, um, they're waiting on the utility to go get that project pushed forward, information, information from Pacific Power. Um, I know that one in the unproceeds, like I say, of what we're allowed to ask for for our due operations and get reimbursed for it too. Um, just to put that out there as this request comes in front of us.
One of the other things is, as you can see in the cover letter, I did not ask for any specific amount. I wanted to leave that because of what you're talking about. I didn't know what you had committed. Um, one of the other options, uh, in here is if we got the 23,000 is my first priority. If we didn't get all of the 23,000, then that leaves the option up to the disaster unit to come up with the remainder to outfit the first ambulance. Look at the second one later, get more money becomes available.
The thing is, is we almost have to have some, because we have to spend the money to get it. And so.
You have to reimburse, right?
Reimburse, reimburse.
Yeah, and, and at this particular point, the Paisley Disaster Unit has assigned POs for the entire amount. And according to the rep who wants to sell us this stuff, a PO is all that is required, not an actual expenditure. Just a commitment that says we will buy it. Now, whether that's true or not, I don't know. Well, he, he said, he said that all you have to have to go forward is assign POs.
We appreciate that, but we, we can't, the, the CARES dollars are coming through us. He might be talking about the, the special districts dollars, but these CARES dollars, and I don't know if I've been told it's reimbursable, so you have to spend dollars to get it back in. Now, with paper, something that's why I have the PO that time. Go ahead, Melanie.
That's how we work.
So with the other two EMS districts, I've used our minutes and we had a check and we sent that CARES to reimburse. So if we get a suggestion, if we get close to the end of December and we still have a big pot of money, maybe we can give it up to these guys for coronavirus efforts. Which, you know, EMS is easy to say, hey, this is going to be for this. Um, for coronavirus. We could look at it at our last meeting, maybe. I think this is.
So I'm just thinking out loud, could we give them a certain dollar amount off of your invoice right now? And then if they don't have, you know, like a lower cost items. And then if we have more money than we think we're going to by the end of December, we could possibly give you that. And that's just for discussion's sake. Thinking out loud.
So I think if we do do anything, we better try to harbor enough money from our other volunteers to go forward.
Absolutely.
Because, because that's
We'd like to help.
A very, very much a possibility for others to come forward with similar requests. On top of that, our guidelines on these dollars have to be related to COVID. They have to make the argument why they need this system that relates to COVID. And I think that's relatively easy to do, but we have to remember that as we're looking at spending these dollars, COVID-related dollars. And within that, by my understanding, preparations to deal with COVID come under that, prove you don't have to actually have gigs.
All right, to answer your question, Mr. Albertson, uh, off of the, the 23,000 that is listed in the letter, in the, in the fact sheet, uh, you, you get from taking 21 on the, on the quote, the first item, the 21,633, that is the power load mechanism that goes into the ambulance. We need that. And then you jump over to the second page and all of those items that are listed, well, the first three items that are listed with a one there, those are required to upgrade the, the gurney that we already have, so it fits that. And that comes out to, uh, 23,637. That was the number I had here, uh, 23,637. What is, what I did not do, missed out on it, and isn't covered in that 23, is the fourth item down, which is the trade-in of the manual load faster. That's what they're going to take out our ambulance to put the power load in. And they're going to give us a $2,000 trade-in on that. And that minus 2,000 wasn't included. So 21,637 is the number that comes up.
21,633.
Okay. I'm just going by off yours, John. And you know how you do the numbers with us during budget time.
Yes. Take that there.
But if, if the commissioners can help us out in any way up to, like I said, realistically, I'm not looking for a whole one. I'm looking for just that enough to upgrade our first ambulance.
I, I think, uh, looking forward for our communities is going to be absolutely essential that our ambulances remain effective, running and working. There, all of them are at risk right now. Losing like that, D C one, all of them are at risk of losing ambulances, they're falling out of compliance if they don't, they can't meet certain standards.
Well.
Is that correct, John?
Not, not entirely. There's not, they're not changing any of the requirements on the ambulances. They have drastically changed some of the, uh, requirements for new ambulances.
Okay.
But they haven't, they're not grandfathering those all the way back through all existing ambulances primarily because everybody would go, would be not being able to operate if they did that. So our ambulances are under compliance and we expect so. My issue right now is, is people. Uh, we have, uh, five EMPs that are part of the unit. Uh, two have just had babies and are not available at, pretty much at all, uh, or under very, very special circumstances. One managed to wreck his, uh, uh, trail bike and broke four ribs and a collarbone. That takes him out of the, uh, yeah, that's true. And one of those is going to school to become a paramedic and it's on the road. They had to go to school three days a week. So, yeah, I'm down at the edge, you know. And what, what do we do right now? The system is if, that we have with the power gurney that we have, it's hydraulic, battery operated, punch button, and it goes up and it down. Really wonderful. You don't have to pick it all the way up.
Right.
But you still have to bring it into the ambulance, set the front wheels in the back of the ambulance and then hold the whole gurney and patient. The gurney weighs 170 pounds plus patient up while the, the wheels retract up hydraulically and then you push it in. What, the $21,000, what we get is this big arm that comes out the back. You run the gurney up and fasten it onto it. One person then just hits a button and this arm comes out, picks the whole gurney, patient and everything up, sucks the wheels up and goes into the ambulance. Really nice. But otherwise, three is about the minimum that I want to be there on the back of that ambulance right now. And we have to load a patient. Our other ambulance is a completely, totally manual, uh, gurney. So we end up having to get its front wheels up, pick it up and then manually lift the wheels to get it into the ambulance. But it's the same process that takes three to five people to get a patient loaded, depending on the size of the patient. So that's what I'm trying to do is to come up with a system that requires less people. Whether it's a COVID patient or not, but trying to leverage all the dollars you can. I get that. You got any thoughts on? I mean, I don't have a problem with the COVID dollars and trying to get the COVID money as long as we have it. But if, do you have any ideas of where, if the COVID didn't pay for his $21,633?
He's got to start looking for grants and other things. Um, this, this is where the struggle is, Commissioner, is this is outside of the county operations. This, this is, I guess, a nonprofit volunteer group company and trying to leverage some dollars that we have been looking at to do COVID-related things on county operations.
And this is not, this is not a request for other than CARES dollars.
Yeah, okay, and so.
And this one.
If we approved it. And if they, the state through the process, did not approve it, they just not perform the project.
That's correct.
And so, um, and I appreciate so much how, um, how you've worked to try to get there and show your departments skin in the game to get to the total 60-some thousand dollars for an AM, for an E.
That would be nice, but I don't think I'm going to come up with that right now.
Probably, probably not, but at least you're looking at what is your responsibility as that ambulance group, representing them and at the same time trying to keep your net state building so you can replace an ambulance when it's necessary. I, we've had that separately, especially appreciated that.
We've been all through that and, and when we purchased the, the new ambulance two years ago, uh, we went to the hydraulic, we were forced to go to the hydraulic, um, gurney because they had, the state of Oregon, OHA, had adopted new federal regulations on ambulances, uh, tie-down systems. We were originally going to move our old gurney and, and the associated, uh, hold-down systems over and it didn't meet the new federal requirements. So we had to go to a new hold-down system. The only hold-down system that met the requirements also required a new gurney. So that cost us $18,000 on top of the price of the ambulance.
So Melanie, jog my memory. Um, we, we helped out another ambulance and we actually did get the CARES dollars instead of grand dollars, if I remember right. Uh, did they have further requests? We only went with half of their request.
She did, so they had a similar request. They were told by Stryker that they were eligible, you know, they were not. And she wanted the same amount of money and I said, we'll have to see and she'll have to bring her request to you guys. I'm 95% confident we can get reimbursed for what he's asking for, given it's for EMS equipment. But, and I would say, yep, give it to him today. But you have some other EMS districts that I think you should duplicate what you're doing for them, just out of fairness. So that's my hesitation.
Well, and they actually have the request before us and we only fulfilled half of the request that they had.
She hasn't brought the other part to me.
Okay.
She, we just did the, the diviators.
Nope, that would be the two that it brought. That still leaves out a couple of their ambulance services within the county, which would be Northlake and one would be Adele.
Adele is part of ours.
Double district.
Yeah, and we did Northlake and we did, um.
Silver, or Silver.
Silverlake and Summerlake are the same.
They're.
We did Christmas Valley and we did Summer.
Some, Summerlake doesn't have an EMS organization. They're covered in the, uh, area of operation with Silverlake.
Right.
And, and just the Paisley side of Summerlake is where the dividing line is.
Right, it's based, Summerlake basically works with Silverlake, but that's.
Yeah, but they don't, but they don't have any equipment. The equipment all comes out silver.
Correct. Correct.
But he might want to argue that you guys gave those other two EMS districts $14,000 out of our CARES funds and you didn't give them out of our CARES funds that we did give some out of our economic development fund. So. I'm just saying, there's no arguing.
I'm not arguing that.
So, um, so we, we, along with another county department, have asked if you've been to like District Hospital, if they had any funds to.
Same request that you guys have in front of you with also the Lake District Hospital. I have not heard back from them. So of the three, I put in three, you guys, City of Paisley and Lake District Hospital. City of Paisley said, yes, we'll go ahead and forward this to, it's not the state, it's a sub-association of cities, I think, is what, whereas they may have to go.
Leave it.
Leave it, or just cities. Yeah, and, uh, but it, but the submit it to them and, uh, and so we would wait. Um, I don't know how long that would take, probably, hopefully not very long to find out. Um, and, um, so that's where we're at. At this particular point, I have no money. But I have one organization that said we'll forward your request.
But you roll the dice and call three funds and you're fully funded.
Well, that's exactly right. That's the best case scenario. You'd be happy with one. I would be, I would be happy with just one. I would be ecstatic with three.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, I come down here and give you guys the first lift on, on the power load.
So, uh, just, just a question. I'm, I'm kind of curious if this would even work. Um, us expending the dollars right now, say, if we, and do it. I would love to have all my EMS districts that are being affected by this and that would have an interest in this in front of us so that we could really iron out exactly what we could do and what we couldn't. Because we only have a limited amount of dollars. And so I was thinking if it would actually work, if we were able to expand a certain amount of dollars immediately and say, okay, here's, this is the county's money. We're spending this because we recognize a huge need with our EMS districts and they're having this huge need. Um, and it is COVID-related because they're the first ones on the line. They're the first ones that are going to be. They're the first ones that are going to be impacted. If you did potentially have an outbreak or anything else, it's that that those patients will be coming down here to the hospital or anywhere else, first coming, coming back with them. So if we were to expand those dollars and then turn around and say, look, we need to get money first for this because we recognize the need. We expended the dollars, they've been spent. We've we've sent the, we've transferred them over, we've strikered everything else out of it. That we we would hope and we would, we would trust that you're going to expend those dollars on everything that we have in front of us. But it's just us spending the dollars.
If we come back and and as as far as expending, if the dollars need to be spent, Paisley can upfront the dollars as long as I'm pretty well assured that I'm going to get them reimbursed.
Well, you 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 would not expend the dollars until you were approved through the, make sure you met.
Well, that's, that's the, that's the understanding that I have with Stryker right now is that, yeah, requests are going in, but they're not going to bill me. And that's why he said that the P O's, signed P O's are all those received.
The thing for the county, we're not out here doing work at the fairground unless we go with law. We're going to limit our, or anything else.
So the issue, I'm going to head.
Well, I I'm I'm wanting to try to simplify future meetings. One thing that this board is always trying to do is be equal with laws, the category. And so it sounds like we have three volunteer ambulances. So probably correct, Paisley, Summer Lake, and Silver Lake.
And Warner Valley.
And Warner Valley is part of the Lake Health Districts. And they're working that out separately, I think, with Troy, the director of EMS.
So I don't know what our dollar amount is, but if we, I'll get to run this out here, but we came up with a dollar amount per ambulance area. This is the amount if you have COVID-related need. This is one and done. Don't come back to us.
I I understand it, but Melanie, a question. You said you, you've already approved care salaries for one of of what amount?
Two, fourteen thousand dollars.
Each?
We said twenty thousand dollars.
Quit negotiating back and forth. No, I just want to.
Well, you, you're talking about we want to be even, you know, if you left them twenty-one, that may be okay.
But, but they asked us for that money because of your request for the.
Oh, yeah.
So you opened the forgery.
I I made a mistake.
So that was wrong.
Yeah, it's that, but it's actually, we're currently here because of.
No, that was my fault.
I know, but you know, we're going to have.
What you gave her was.
So and now with the September news, guidelines from September for care spending, we have to have an agreement for monitoring that they're spent appropriately. So we have that, and so we have that assurance that they would spend according to.
So the one thing, real quick.
I just, I think you used the microphone.
That never happens. Let me says that.
Oh, Sean, we're still.
All right, all right. What was the shot?
I said, real quickly, I, and I said, I sound like James, or it never happens. Anyways, so I gave you two shots for priceable. What I think, what we have to remember is if we don't spend these dollars by the first of the year, we lose them. It would be a shame on us if we have any left over. That's all I got to say. Yeah, and so.
I mean, I did, my mind went to a comment I heard yesterday, not to get into that.
And that's, that's why I'm saying, maybe towards the end of this, when we firm up all of our costs that we're going to have, because we can reimburse them until January twenty-first, I think.
It's February.
February, okay.
They moved it then.
Yeah, so we have a while.
The funds have to be spent by the thirtieth of December.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have a while still, so maybe we can circle our wagons later or if there are funding needs, and then evaluate how we can be equitable to all three of them.
One of the problems you're going to have with your country care sellers, and if you were to come back and say, hey, Northlake, you need to come up with something else for another, catch them out of dollars. They don't, they may not have anything in in process to do that with that hits that amount.
Well, and and so.
That is cares.
My 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 thought that I I really appreciate to me is that we've already used care dollars for basically twenty-eight, almost twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Twenty.
Twenty-eight.
That's fourteen grand a piece.
Yeah, on zero.
So with my thoughts of trying to be equal, it's a pretty easy decision, possibly.
Or you don't want to go with John and bump them up another seven. That would be nice. But but here's you that, here's you guys do that. If you came across and I and I know I'm going to get fourteen thousand dollars, then the decision that is before the pavement disaster unit, if we don't get anything else from anybody else, do we go ahead and come up with the additional seven, seven something that could do our first annual?
Well, if you're a good politician, you can get much more liberal than you used to be.
Okay, so before the shots start going up here.
I'm, so it sounds, it sounds like we are down to where we might could either delay this with the thoughts that we would fund it if money become available, so we can regroup. We could go ahead and make a motion to fund this contingent upon money being available. I I, it sound like, it sound like we got some time time frames.
I think we do. Yeah, I think the decision has to be made by the first of December, by your next board meeting, to allow us to get everything through by the thirtieth.
So I'm going to make a motion.
And then you guys get, don't be down like you did the last.
We will.
My motion is to give the Paisley Disaster Unit fourteen thousand dollars out of cares money. And if we have extra cares money, find extra cares money, we will give them an additional seven thousand.
Seven thousand six. I just said seven, you want me to change my motion?
Seven thousand six.
You can come up with the six hundred, John.
Okay. I, I, yes, I'll agree with that. Okay. Motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve contingent upon qualifying for fourteen thousand dollars of care dollars. And if there is more care dollars available later on, bump that up another seven thousand. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, be dead. Thank you.
Just.
So you worked with Melanie to get same to him?
Yeah, I'm not sure what else you need, if anything, than what I've already presented to you.
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay. So that goes in and they approve it, and then I get the check.
Unless you want cash.
But choose my.
Check's fine. All right, being up.
Took a while, I'll tell you.
Yeah, you got to check once.
It's twenty minutes because we can do this. We can, we can.
You don't want our name.
Yes, sir.
Say, well, I think we're going to get our number. One, five, nine, eight, one, eight.
Discussion, do we have a choice?
I make a motion to accept one, uh, Sixteenth Amendment to the Oregon Health Authority. Let's see, thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Number one, five, nine, eight, one, eight.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the Sixteenth Amendment to Oregon Health Authority, twenty nineteen, twenty-one, intergovernmental agreement, agreement number one, five, nine, eight, one, eight. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item is, yesterday we had the presentation on reorganization in the sheriff's department at the sheriff, sergeant position that is in Northlake. I told the sheriff that I didn't think he needed to be here. So I don't, I don't need any further discussion, so if you guys do, we can get him. If not, entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the sheriff's proposal for a salaried position and officer on the north end of your county, sergeant position.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to have a sheriff's department sergeant position up north. Bit of clarification, this is not adding, this will be, somebody will be moving into this. For addition. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Goose Lake repayment agreement. Mr. Berman redid that for us. I asked for all three signatures on it, just it's a huge huge direction we're going. A great, a good direction we're going for, the betterment of our shippers, our railroads. That correction has been made for three signatures on this agreement, so I would entertain the motion.
I make a motion to accept the railroad agreement, on a Goose Lake repayment agreement.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the agreement, repayment structure between Lake County and Goose Lake Railroad. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. John Dear Lawnmower, that was brought to us by Mr. Berman also. Yesterday, I have no further questions. Nobody?
I'll make a motion to agree to pay, make the John Dear Lawnmower purchase for a fiscal impact of nine thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and some cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the quote for John Dear Lawnmower. Just to note that the quotes were given, the three quotes followed our process in this containment as a full quote. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Solar advisory applications, three final mandates. We had a lot of discussion yesterday, I believe, that was good to go. Entertain the motion. Have all their names.
Yeah, hang on, I got it. Thank you, sir. Nice, man. Like a cat, right? Maybe an old dog, but you're a pretty cool cat. Did you catch that in a minute? Sorry. I will make a motion to approve the application to the solar advisory committee for Amanda O'Brien, Pete Talbot, Shannon Field, and Garrett Roseberry.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the applications to appoint to this committee. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Did you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
All right.
My carry.
You're not, I mean, I've said.
Let me see, five, three, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Did we get it all?
That was it.
Mr. Bailey, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am. I've been drawing it quite, quite a lot.
So legal updates for open session?
No, no.
Legal updates for executive session?
So, none that you aren't already aware of?
No. Thank you for being on the line all day. We appreciate your.
My pleasure, Commissioner, it's always a joy.
I see nothing else to come.
I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, dear.
Yeah. Nothing further to come before the board?
No.
We will adjourn at fourteen minutes to three. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.